All right, let's get started. First thing we want to do is we want the candidates to introduce themselves. My name is Russell L. I'm going to be your host and your moderator. We got rules. When we ask a question, we expect for you two minutes. Answer the question. Let's get through this so we can get out of here. We're going to start over here with the sisters. Introduce yourself to the crowd.
Hello, everyone. First, I would like to thank the hosts for having us all here today and allowing us to come collectively and speak about ideas and issues that are going on in our district. My name is Allison Quintana. I'm a graduate from the University of Houston. I currently reside in Fifth Ward. I'm an active member of the community and I'm looking to bring fresh ideas while maintaining a sense of security in a changing social and economic district.
Good evening, everyone. Let me first thank the host, Eric. Thank you, guys, and thank everybody for being here. My name is Renee Jefferson-Smith and I am running to be your next city councilwoman in Houston's District B. I'm originally from the Acres Home community. I currently live in the Trinity Garden community with my family. I'm a graduate with a degree in psychology. The first thing I'd like to tell you is that I've been here, 40 years old. I've never moved away from my community. And one thing that I know, whether you're from Acres Home, Fifth Ward, Trinity Garden, Cashmere Garden, is that we're under-resourced, we're underprivileged, and we're underserved. Never in a million years did I ever think that I would be running for office. But I decided to make that decision because of the disparities that are taking place in our community, the lack of resources that we have in our community. And so, again, I want to thank you guys for being here and I look forward to fellowshipping with you this evening.
Good evening. My name is Broderick Butler and I'm from Sinekwood. I am here running for District B. This is the second time, so thank you for having us back again and hopefully we'll have another opportunity in the future. Before I arrived over here, I actually stopped by my grandfather's house that's on Inglewood, right behind this community, to see if it was still standing, and it was. And there was an older gentleman that was there that had taken over the house. So it was still good to see that my grandfather's house was standing and somebody else was living in it. But those are the good things. The reason that I'm running in District B is because of the issues and the problems that we've had over the last 30 years in this community: economic development, crime, as well as education. So the reason that I'm running for District B is to help your community look like it needs to look like. Cashmere is not Acres Home. Acres Home is not Sinekwood. But each of your communities need to be listened to and assisted in helping to look like what you want to have. So, again, my name is Broderick Butler and I'm running for District B. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Cosse-Chirneseff. I am honored to be here today. Thank you so much for the invitation. I look forward to serving as your city councilwoman for Houston City Council, District B. I'm from the area. I was educated in the area and I've been committed to the area from my very first employment. So I look forward to serving as your city councilwoman for Houston City Council, District B.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Bailey. I was born in St. Elizabeth High School, moved to City Gas, resided at City Gas, a former graduate of Forest Brook High School, a former hot team supervisor for District B. I am the founder and executive director for Impact in Houston. Vote Bailey for B. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing? My name is Alvin Byrd and I'm running for Houston City Council, District B. Born and raised in Fifth Ward. And also, I'd like to extend my thanks to the Moore Science Temple and Brother Russell L. for putting this on again. I'm running for District B. As you notice, we all know what the problems are. Now we need to move to our solutions. And I think that my experience will help us be able to resolve some of these issues that we're dealing with throughout our district. Alvin Byrd for District B.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Russell, for putting this forum on again. My name is Tasha Jackson and I am running for Houston City Council, District B. I was born and raised in the district and from Acres Homes, Lakewood, and I currently live in Greenspoint. I know the love and the pride that we have for our community and how hard we fight to keep our community moving forward. I mean, we face with our schools closing, our buildings closing, our roads crumbling, and I just want to spend all my love and energy fighting for the changes our community deserve. Eighteen years ago, my life changed after my 10-year-old special needs son was arrested at his elementary school. I immediately went from being a working mom to a parent advocate, fighting for changes within our community. And so, I've been fighting and winning on issues that the community care about and I commit to continue once I'm on council. Thank you again. My name is Tasha Jackson for Houston City Council, District B.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben White Jr. and I'm a native Houstonian, born and raised in Fifth Ward. Also, my fingerprints and footprints are all over my community. In 1995, I founded the Fifth Ward Civic Club that's going strong. In 1997, I became part of the Juicy C Hustle House. In 1998, I became Executive Director. I raised $2.5 million for that new wellness center that is there. I'm also a member of the Near North Side Management District, which now I'm the chairman of the board of the district, of the management district. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, candidates. The first question is, what makes you think that you are capable of representing this district? Let's start with Alvin Byrd.
Thank you for the question. What makes me think that I am capable, simply because of my experience? Most of you in this room have been able to watch me work in regards to resolving some of the issues in our district. I've been able to work on both sides of this deal as a civil servant, as the president of the Greater Fifth Ward Super Neighbourhood Council, and also, I've worked at the City of Houston in two of our core service departments: Department of Neighborhoods and the Solid Waste Management Department. I've also had the pleasure and the, I've had the opportunity to work at City Hall. I've seen how a district office works. And I think that my experience will be very helpful in managing the office and also being able to address the issues in the community by working with all of the civic leaders that I've basically been working with all of this time. I know the department heads. I know the folks who make the decisions in these departments, and I think that that makes me probably the most qualified to do that.
Renee Jefferson-Smith.
Well, let me just say that, you know, service does not start with the idea of me running for Houston City Council. Service is something that's been embedded in me from being raised with my grandparents, watching my grandmother work at Kincaid and having to go in through the back door when African-Americans were not allowed in the front door. I served as a regional HR manager with ExxonMobil and had the ability to manage million-dollar budgets. I've worked in my community. I've had boots on the ground during Hurricane Harvey, helping seniors to restore their properties from wrongful evictions, from reverse mortgages. And so, you know, I heard Alvin say that experience matters. I do. But when I look at my streets and the infrastructure that's needed, when I look at the seniors that are still hungry, when I look at the human trafficking and prostitution that's still taking place, when I look at the lack of economic development, I would say that we still need help. And so, I think that we need someone that's going to have fresh ideas, someone that can effectively communicate and get the job done, and someone that's willing to build a relationship with those that are invested in the people of District B. We have a lot of things going on in the community, a lot of changes taking place, but we're not here to displace anybody. We want to make sure that we're creating opportunities for those of here that want to be here to be able to stay here. And so, that's why I think that I can represent you November 5th, 2019, as the next city councilwoman. Thank you.
Thank you. Pronounce your name for me.
Allison.
Oh, that's easy.
Hello, everyone. I wish I could stand up here and tell you, like everyone else is going to say, that they have all this type of experience. I'm just a regular person from the community. However, I've been very committed to my community. I started out in Trinity Gardens. I used to help my neighbors who were elderly clean out their ditches and their coverts. When I moved to Fifth Ward, I became active in Fifth Ward. I work with Progressive Fifth Ward. We do a lot of stuff for the community. But beyond that, I have a very strong educational background. I graduated from the University of Houston. I have a degree in finance and economics. I've been in the oil and gas industry for about five years now. And we do a lot of operational audit, and operational audit is something that's very much needed in this district when we've had decades of mismanagement of money. And I do plan, when I get to City Council, to get to the bottom of where this money is going and why we haven't seen the investments in our community.
Thank you.
I've worked in Austin for the last 25 years for the legislature. We've worked with budgets that are $25 million. We've worked with government, and those skills translate very well down here. So when I got into my neighborhood, when people had issues and concerns with Metro, we went down to the board. We didn't go down to people that worked for Metro. We went down to the board and requested changes, and we got those changes. And people told me, you don't get a lot from Metro. Then, I took myself down to City Hall. We asked for roads to be repaired in communities. They told us 30 days, no problem. When they didn't get the 30 days done, I stood speaking truth to power and told the mayor, I think you lied to us. The mayor's response was, those are pretty harsh words. I said, but it's the truth, Mr. Mayor. And my councilmember was sitting there. So that woman's road has still not been fixed, but she'll be at City Council with me next week, when she gets back from vacation, to look her councilmember in the eye, to look the mayor in the eye, and speak truth to power. So I'm asking for the job, but I'm already doing the job. And I'll still be doing the job because people have been underserved in this community that look like me, that look like my grandfather, that look like people that are related to me. This is unacceptable. So, the reason I think I can do the job, I'm already trying to do it.
I think that I am qualified to do the job because I am sincere and I'm committed. I could talk about my educational background, which is very rich, one that I know God blessed me to acquire over years of study. But what drove me to do what I did, even as an educator, was the condition that I saw in the Fifth Ward area as I played for my father's church, Latter Day Deliverance Revival Church, on the corner of Lyons and Benson. Watching that building and how a small group of people pooled their resources together, their time and their energy, in the name of revitalizing the area in the immediate vicinity of the church, helped me to see the importance of taking what I saw and using it more broadly in the community. We saw needs in every way. I saw elderly people who needed help. I saw children who needed to see a better way. And all of the things that I acquired educationally to help me to serve in various capacities made me know that I'm qualified to serve on an even greater level. I am from District B. I've been committed to this area. I'm going to continue to do what I do, but I'm totally confident that I'm qualified to do the job. And I'd like your vote.
What makes me think I'm qualified for the job? I have a relationship with people at City Hall. I don't just know them. I have a relationship with them. And being qualified means that, to me, that you've been doing the work a number of years, not post-Harvey, pre-Harvey, everything. For the last 20 years, I've been in City Gas area doing the work. My work then began in the end of City Gas. I worked through all of District B. I was supervisor of the hot team for District B. I'm the one who's been responsible for picking up a lot of y'all's trash, debris, tires, anything you had. I had a passion for that because I asked for that two years ago from councilmember Jerry Davis. He gave me an opportunity to show that you want it, you do it. And I've been out there doing the work. So, experience, I mean, I have it.
Well, I've been organizing in the community for almost 20 years, 19, 20 years. And as I said earlier, I started organizing after my 10-year-old special needs son was arrested at his elementary school. I was instrumental in getting legislation passed that prohibited counties from jelling kids on Class C misdemeanors. I established the first-ever Parent Bill of Rights, and we got over 2,000 kids returned back into their communities. And so, after that fight, as I was navigating the system, I saw the injustice, not just within the criminal justice system, but within housing and schools and jobs. And so, I couldn't go back to banking because I was bit by the bug. You know, I was woke. And so, I had to keep organizing and fighting for my communities. So I'm a 2011 Sowers Justice Fellowship. My fellowship was engaging communities to reduce the number of kids going into juvenile justice system. And over the past six years, I've managed Texas Organizing Project, a $2 million budget, and was responsible for not just fighting and winning millions of dollars to repair homes that was damaged after Hurricane Ike, but the recent bail reform. And so, I have a working relationship with the city. I secured the first community benefits agreement ever in the state of Texas. They said it can be done, but we made it happen together, working with civic club leaders and pastors and community members. And so, that's why I'm the best person for the job. I have a working relationship with the people. I've been in the community. I understand the issues. I've been fighting and winning and getting results, and that's what I plan to do when I'm on council. Thank you. Vote Tasha Jackson.
As I stated before, my name is Ben White Jr. For 25 years, I worked for Dresser Industries. In my capacity at Dresser Industries, I was a supervisor of accounts payable and accounts receivable. I did that job for 20 years, but my last five years, I was an auditor. I was an auditor. When you work for a big corporation, $2.2 billion, sometimes they have what you call duplicate payments. As an auditor, I found million and a half duplicate payments. Now, the arrangement that I had with my employer that they were going to pay me a percentage of how many duplicate payments I found. They immediately changed that up because I was finding too many duplicate payments. When I went to the Hustle House, I managed 25 employees. And what I found out when I went to the Hustle House, we had what you call a food shelter, a homeless shelter, and you had to make a certain income to be able to be awarded those services. When I got there, what I found out was some of my employees made less money than made them eligible for the services. So I had to make sure, I had to bring all their money up to par so they wouldn't be clients. So my experience in working with the community, my corporate experience, my financial background make me the qualified candidate for the job. Thank you.
If you live in District B, like all of you say, then you know the conditions of District B. Your job would be to allocate money. If voted into office, how can we trust that you won't put the money in your pocket like everybody else been doing?
Want me to answer that question? Because I have a track record of integrity and being honest, just simple as that. I beg you to research Ben White Jr. I've always been in the capacity of handling large amounts of money, and there's never been no discretion with my name when it came down to the money. When we was at Juicy C Hustle House, when we raised that $2.2 million, we had an outside audit. We had an inside audit, and we had an outside audit. My name never came up in any type of fraudulent incidents about money. When I worked at Dresser Industries, I was the one that was catching people with fraudulent claims. So my name is clean. You know what they say? They say if you want to know about a man, really about a man, go and ask his family because they going to tell the truth.
Well, basically, over the years, I've been challenging not just the city but developers to make sure that the dollars that's coming within our communities come to our communities. And I've been pushing for community benefits agreements. As you guys heard me earlier, we secured the first community benefits with Clemmie Manor Apartment Complex, but it's been a challenge to get additional community benefits agreement because the city, you know, this is something that they just do not want to do. And so, when I'm in office and elected, I'm going to make sure that our city council is transparent, the process is transparent, and people know what's going on. They know when these federal dollars and these tax abatements are being issued out, that the community have a voice and they have a say in how their money is being spent.
First and foremost, one of the basic principles of being an elected official is being transparent. If I'm elected or when I'm elected as your city councilmember, and here's an instance, one of the things we want to do, if a developer approaches my office, he cannot come to my office and ask for any support from me unless he goes to those leaders and those people in the area he wants to build. Once he receives a letter of support from them, I will then go again to them and ask them why did they support this particular developer? That's one of the ways that you can make sure that a developer and a councilmember are not having backdoor meetings. My experience at City Hall has not been that I was the councilmember, or my experience working in one of these departments is not that I was the, you know, supervisor, the shock caller, but I do understand that it will take a person with integrity and a person with honesty to make sure that these issues are met, I mean, these issues are resolved. Thank you.
Every official that solicited our votes say the same things y'all saying. They all say, if you put me in office, I'm going to do this. And then, when they get in office, I mean, I'm from District B, and it looks terrible. Nobody wants to move in District B. What are you going to do to allocate this money to District B? I'm saying, just say, for instance, if Tasha becomes city councilperson, she's from Acres Home, what makes Tasha or Byrd is from Fifth Ward and Ben White is from Fifth Ward, that y'all not going to take the money and put it in Fifth Ward and forget about District B? Because everybody, even the city councilmember now, I mean, he haven't did anything in District B. He told us the same things that you all are telling us. And what we want to know, who can we really trust? And every one of you all going to say that we can trust you. That's what everybody going to say because everybody's going to tell that story. But everybody is, one of you all is going to be city council. Are you going to do the same thing to District B that everybody else has done in District B? Are you going to take that money and not put it towards the community and give contracts to people who supporting you and forget about District B?
All right. First off, my name is Robin J. Anderson. I apologize to my attorneys. I just got off of work. I work at FedEx, so I had about 90 stops, so I had to get home and...
Introduce yourself, brother.
I just did. Yeah, Robin J. Anderson. Yeah, thank you. So, either way, the question that you say, well, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
If you're going to put that money in your pocket in District B?
Oh, no. No, I definitely put the money in my pocket. What I want to do is make sure and get with everybody in the community because the community has to have an agenda. You know, so I can come in with all kind of plans, but if it's not going, if it's not doing what the community need, it makes no sense. You know, so I will work with the community first, find the agendas and make things happen. So, I'm not going to put any money in my pocket. I work at FedEx, so, you know. Nah, I'm not greedy like that, you know, so, but no, I won't do that.
Okay. I think how we handle money when we go into City Council will have a lot to do with whom our supporters were before we got there. Like, who is actually funding our campaigns? How much are they putting into our campaign coffers? I am an independent candidate. I started running because I felt compelled to run. I didn't have, did not have a group behind me to run. In fact, someone challenged me on that and asked me who was supporting me, and I let them know that I'm running because I feel like I'm supposed to run. I am using the resources that are gradually coming in from members of the community. I'm grateful for whatever they're able to give, but I am also using my personal resources to help make it work, and I am grateful that I've been able to stay in the race as long as I have. I will also say this in a very real way. I have managed grants at Texas Southern University, and I have never been called on the carpet for mismanaging a grant. And I've managed about six or seven of them, off the top of my head, over the course of my being there. I'm an honest person, and I'll say this, some of you may understand this, it will speak to you, I am a tither. I've always been one, from my earliest, from the first job I had. And so, just putting aside that 10% has helped me to be someone who knows how to manage money. I can do quite a bit with the 90. So, will a man rob God? I won't, and I'm not going to rob you.
My answer to you is the same answer I'd give to you if we saw each other on the street. I'm not going to jail for you. I'm not going to jail for you, or you, or you. And I'm not going to jail for my little dumb behind. So, there are reasons that people need to do what's right. And as my mama used to say, when I'd say, well, this is what I did, she said, you don't get no points for doing what you're supposed to do. So like I told you, I'm not going to jail for you. You are my dumb behind. Same answer I give to you on the streets.
I think the next person that we elect in office has to be a person that is honest, a person that's willing to bring transparency to City Hall, someone that has compassion about representing the people in the district. To Karen's point, and just to piggyback a little bit off of what she said, I too am an independent candidate. Never thought that I would run for office. And so, you know, to be honest with you, I don't even really know what the position pays. I'm a small business owner, and I am only running to represent the people in District B. And I think that the work that I've been able to do thus far for the last three years that I've had my name in the hat speaks volumes as to why I could be the next city councilwoman to represent this district. Thank you.
I want to keep it real with everybody and let y'all know, you know, I've been abandoned my entire life. You know, my father abandoned my mother. My mother abandoned me. And when I decided, I had to go live with my grandmother. And when I decided to make the journey to Houston, because I'm originally from San Antonio, Texas, and I came here to go to college, and there was just something calling me here. And, you know, my grandma turned her back on me and said, you know, you're going to go to Houston, that's it. And so, I know what it like, I know what it's like to feel abandoned. And just like I've been abandoned, so have all the communities have been abandoned in this district. And I feel like my struggle, I know the ups and the downs, and I'm here with you the entire way. And I'm willing to do things, you know, with the outlook, with the community, and that we share collectively because we're all in this together.
Do you believe that in order to serve the district, that you have to live in the district? Renee?
Absolutely. I feel very strongly about that. I'll be honest with you, I'm offended by people that choose to move here just to represent us. And when I say that, I say that because I'm a constituent, just like you guys are. I have no problem sharing with individuals, and many people know that my husband and I live in between Lauricapi and Titwell. I don't have a problem inviting people to my home because that's where I live. And one thing that I know is that when we lay down at night, sometimes we hear gunshots. When we get ready to go to the grocery store, just as I was today, had on some flip-flops, some shorts, had to go to Family Dollar to grab some milk. So if you live anywhere else and you have an opportunity to experience those things that we don't have, I believe that maybe you can help us, but you don't truly represent the people of District B. It's just something different about having to drive down the streets and see the abandoned buildings. It's something different about not having grocery stores in your community. It's something different about knowing that... It's something different about knowing that children stay after school because they don't have parents at home, because they don't have food in their house. So, I'm truly offended by those that choose to move in the district just to run. And I do believe that you should live in your district if you are looking to represent District B.
I think it's very essential for you to live in the district that you're running, because you live and breathe the issues every day. It becomes more passionate to you that you see your neighbor dumping, and you have to go tell him, "Hey, like, go pick up the trash, like, what's wrong with you?" Versus, it's like somebody else coming into your house telling you how to raise your children. That's not gonna happen in my household, so, why would I let it happen in my community? I think that for you to be able to experience the things like the potholes that we're running up and down, you know, the types of experiences that you go through living. I have not only lived in Fifth Ward, but I've also lived in Trinity Garden. So, I've lived in different parts of the district, and not all of the communities are facing the same issues. There's different communities facing different issues, and then that's what makes us all a part of a bigger picture, to be able to bring those issues together. But if you don't live and breathe these issues every day, how can you say that you're passionate about what's going on over here?
The answer is simply yes. My grandfather lives behind this building, or his house is still behind this building. So, I've spent time in Fifth Ward as a child. I'm helping people in Greenspoint try to put a civic club together. I'm going over in the Acres Home to try to meet people and deal with their issues. I'm one of the few candidates that has been in every corner of this district talking to people. But the simple part is, the neighbors that I grew up instill pride in me. The teachers that I had told me, "Where you go, wherever you go, tell people that you are a product of North Forest Independent School District." And the legacy of those, many of those neighbors who are no longer here, but I still see their descendants and relatives walking the streets of this community, I do it for them. So, there is no other answer, but yeah, you gotta represent the community you live in.
I agree with my colleagues here. You absolutely need to live in the district, and not just in your little corner of the district. It's important to travel throughout District B, because, as Ayana said, the needs vary from one community to the next. As a little girl, I grew up in basically three, in fact, my family is, has been in District B since before the enslaved were freed, okay? So, we've been out here a long time. I've been taught to have pride, to take pride in whatever I see that I can, I should take pride in doing what I can to improve what's around me. And so, that's been how I've lived my life. So, we grew up in what was once called Ryan's Edition. Then we moved to Scenic Woods. Scenic Woods was different from Fifth Ward, where we were worshiping most of the time. I came back and started teaching at Smiley High School. And I've watched the community since the nineteen sixties, I would say seventies when I was consciously aware. I've watched the communities change throughout the district. And I see the needs, as I'm riding to Mickey Leland Prep to bring my son to school. I see the trash on the way. I see the abandoned houses, I see the abandoned churches. I see those issues that need to be addressed in our area in particular. But I also see improvement in some areas. So, there's a lot that we have to handle, but it's important for us to really have a vested interest, not just an interest, but to be here rooted in the community. We need to have neighbors out here, so that we can find out what's important. And I'll end with this, because I have the sign out that I'm running, I have people coming to me now, telling me what I need to do in City Hall. Okay, so, the fact that they can just knock on my door suggests the importance of our needing to live out here and not somewhere else, or having sort of a vacation home in the district, but not really living out here. Yes, we need to live in the district if we're gonna serve the district.
Yes, we, you do understand the district. You have to be engaged, you have to know what's going on. I've been in Acres Home pretty much all my life. I've gotten involved, I've been part of the civic club, I've been the vice president of Super Neighborhood. I participate in, you know, community cleanups, you know, so I'm engaged. I open a business in the community where we employ at-risk kids, you know, so I'm in the community. Yeah, you have to be involved, you have to be engaged and know what the community need, what the district needs. I haven't been everywhere just yet, but I'm working my way that way, but, you know, I'm honest enough. I mean, I know that everything, all the, all the district, from Acres Home all the way to this, we all have the same issues, illegal dumping, you know, it's economic development, it's challenged, you know, so, it's not too much, it's different. We all see what it is, we need to get out there, we need to figure out ways of coming together and making this thing change, and make it work for the better, for the benefit of the district, you know what I mean? So, but, to answer your question, yes, you have to be from the district. Thank you.
Yes, I feel that you should live in the district, but not just live in the district, serving your district. Serving your community, because what you do in your community will let me know what you gonna do for the city. What you gonna do for District B. Don't start serving three years before election come and say, "I've been serving in my community." No, I've been serving in District B since nineteen ninety-three. I've taken thousands of kids all across the world. They've been to the Bahamas, to Vegas, to California, you name it. I created a nonprofit organization, because in the area I live in, the kids were being raised by their grandparents. So, I did that so that they could be at ease that sometime when these kids got out of school, they had a safe haven to go to. They could, they could feel safe, they can do things. Dressed them up in tuxedos, and they did the walks. They perform at the Worthing Theater. So, if you don't feel my pain, you don't know what we going through. If you don't live here, if you a drive-by through, or you a work by every three years to do something, you don't know what we go through. When Harvey came, everybody, a Harvey hero, but what happened when I came? We had Allison, we had Katrina. Everybody can talk about Harvey, but what was you doing before Harvey? What have you did for anybody other than yourself? You know, you want to be a city council, you want to start at the top? It's work that's involved in going to the top. And if you haven't paid your dues, you don't need to be in City Hall. Thank you.
I agree absolutely. You must live in the district. It's one of the requirements to run for city council. Now, here's the deal. When you're active in the area you live in, most of the people sitting up here don't know where you live at. They just asking questions about, "I heard you don't live in the district." Here's the bottom line. Take care of your area. Take care of your area. That's one of the issues in District B now, we're so fragmented. This is not even an issue about residency. It's about what are you doing for this entire district? One of the things I want folks to know, and I see some civic leaders in here, in the Fifth Ward area, they have what they call block captains. I don't go beat my chest and tell people, "Hey, where I live at on this corner, I'm the block captain." They know that. What I do in Fifth Ward, and what I do in Acres Homes, and I've been blessed to be able to work in all of these areas, and God has, God has blessed me, I get a paycheck to do it. And if you think that that don't count as experience in working in this district, you're sadly mistaken. One of the things we gotta do is keep the focus on what the primary objective is, is to move this district forward. Let me just say this. We gotta stop all the shenanigans, man. We gotta stop playing with each other around here. Let's do this thing right. If we gonna have a forum, let's do this thing right. Let's talk about resolving these real issues that we face every day. Don't be worried about where somebody live right now. The thing of it is, is this. If you care about this district, I've been living in Fifth Ward all my life. It's been labeled as one of the worst place, I came from a place called Pearl Harbor. Pearl Harbor, where people used to tell me on a daily basis, Russell, you know where I'm from? "Hey, man, you ain't gonna make it to be seventeen." And I attended their funerals. God is the great master motivator, and that's what I'm working on.
Well, okay, so, as Mr. Bird said, the requirement is that you live in a district. And so, I do believe that you have to live in a district to represent District B. I live in District B in Greenspoint, I actually own a house in Greenspoint. I was born in Acres Homes and lived in northeast Houston, and, you know, I moved away, moved to California, came back. I lived in Cypress, came back, but a lot of my time was in District B. I've been organizing in District B. As I said, I started organizing, working with Acorn. I don't know how many of you guys remember Acorn. I was working with Acorn back in two thousand and four, you know. Acres Homes was like my hub, you know, and so, at the end of the day, I know the community, I'm in the community, I've been fighting with the community, and I'm ready to keep fighting for my community. And that's why I'm here. I'm not just here because I want to be here, I love District B. I had the opportunity to see other areas grow and thrive, and I see what we're, what we don't have, and what we could have. And I see how we've been neglected and how our voice has been left out of council, and we need someone in council to advocate for us, and I'm ready to do it. So, thank you.
Our current city council member do not live in District B. So, apparently, there can't be no requirement. But I live in Fifth Ward, forty-five hundred Raleigh. I've been there all my life. I live in the house that I grew up in with my six siblings. And it's amazing that I raised my three siblings in that same house. And that house seemed so small, and it's just me. But I want to set the record straight about my community. See, if you look at the statistics, the crime rate in Fifth Ward is lower than any other rates in the District B. See, that's what you don't know. And that's because people like myself stayed and fought when everybody else was fleeing. See, I, my track record speaks for itself. And if you ask me what my integrity gonna be, well, I'm a man of pride. So, if I got this much pride in my community, then if you allow me to represent you as your council member for District B, I'm gonna have that same pride about District B that I have about the Fifth Ward community.
This next question is for Tasha Jackson. The word is that you are working for TOP to further their gentrification of our communities, especially the Fifth Ward. Is that true?
That's not true. TOP is a nonprofit organization. We get our resources, and actually, right now, I don't work for TOP anymore, I quit to run for office. But when I was working for TOP, we are a nonprofit organization, and we rely on donors and foundations to help us keep the work moving forward. TOP do not get any money from the city, they don't, any type of federal government, they don't, we don't get money from nobody. So, there is no way that I will be responsible for any type of gentrification within District B. Actually, it would probably be the developers that's already in District B, that already have contracts that's already signed, and that we don't know about. So, it won't be Tasha gentrifying the neighborhood.
Alvin Bird?
Yes.
What I heard was that, at first, you were endorsing Renee Jefferson Smith, and then you decided to get in the race yourself. Why?
Yeah, that's a good question. Now, let me tell you why. Because now publicly, we'll get this straight, because there's a lot of rumors. I hear folks talking about what I am. Let me tell you what I ain't. First of all, when the young lady was introduced to me by some other people now, that's one of the reasons I don't do this publicly, because it's gonna implicate other people. It's not just me and her. My thing is, where I come from, I don't bring other people in my mess. But I'll tell you this, what you hear ain't always true. I want people to understand that my integrity speaks for itself. I ain't bashing nobody, but I do know for a fact that if you take a swipe at me, I'm gonna take a swipe at you. That's just the way this thing go. I put in the work, Russ, I put in the work in this district. I'm the guy that was in Acres Homes getting the tires out of the ditches, picking up illegal dumping before they had a hot teen. I'm the guy that stayed in Acres Homes when they was looking for the murderers. Stayed in Acres Homes eight days in a hotel and didn't have to. I'm the guy that, when we didn't have a pod over in the North Forest area, we went and commandeered a truck, so we could have ice and supplies. When, what was that, Ike, or, yeah, when Ike hit. I've been blessed to live two lives in one lifetime, the way I used to live and the way I live now. And there's no way that I'm gonna blemish my integrity trying to run around behind lies, Russ. So, if anybody walk up to me and ask me, "What happened with me and Ms. Jefferson?", that's our business. That's our business, has nothing to do with resolving these issues. So, that's my answer to that, Russ, and I'm sticking to that, man.
Let's be clear and understand something, that the questions that I'm asking you all are questions that we receive from people. So, we don't need all that. The question that we're asking you, or these are questions that people have presented. And you saying that you running for city council, that's everybody. Then you can't pick and choose, because if you get into city council, you gonna pick and choose. We don't want you picking and choosing now. Transparency is what somebody said, so let's have that. Now, if you have no direct experience in city government, and listening to most of you, some of you work for the city, so I guess that would be city government. What skills or quality of experience do you bring to being a city council? Or do you bring experience, or is it gonna be on-the-job training? Or is city council gonna be your second job? Tasha?
Well, the skills that I have is, I served on Mayor Turner's transition team. I actually craft, helped craft his policy agenda. I also served on District Attorney Kim Ogg's transition team. Over the past, what, six years, I worked closely with the Housing and Community Development Department after Hurricane Ike, to, you know, oversee the implementation of the disaster recovery, round two dollars that was coming in, that, you know, make sure that homes are being repaired and making sure that, you know, the dollars are actually going where they supposed to go, infrastructure projects, and that, and of course, as I said earlier, fighting for community benefits. And so, my experience has been, even though it's been in grassroots and nonprofit, I've been working closely with the city. I know how the city operate. I know, as I said earlier, how they shut us out, how we present, you know, good policy recommendations, and they go on ignored, and so, I have the skills, I have the experience, and I'm ready to work. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and work for District B.
Allison?
I have a very strong educational background. I worked extremely hard to put myself through college, I'm a single mother. And I work in the oil and gas industry right now. I work as an account manager in the oil and gas industry, and we, and I manage the accounts for underwriting coverage for blowouts, just like the BP gas spill that they had. So, as far as being an organized person, I'm extremely organized. And beyond that, I'm a people person, you know, I work in the community, I work with Progressive Fifth Ward Community Organization, and we do a lot of work in the community, especially working with the new, the new developers that are coming in the area, or making partners with landowners that already exist in the area. And on top of that, you know, I've gone out to other communities and developed relationships with other communities, and I think having the gift of being a people person, a personal person, is something that's very few far in between these days.
Can you repeat the question, because I believe it was a two-part question?
Yes. If you have no direct experience in city government, is it necessary to have skills or qualification, or is being a city councilperson gonna be your second job?
Okay, so as stated, I am a small business owner, so to answer that question, no, it won't be a second job. But I will say that, you know, as you stated earlier, only one person will become the next city councilperson for District B. Not one person. Not one person can do this job alone. It takes building relationships with those that are vested in our community. It takes the understanding to know the issues that are going on in the community and displaying transparency with those that are in the community. I tell people, and of course, everyone up here should know, and you guys, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know, it's always a meeting before the meeting. There are a lot of things happening in our community that unfortunately, we don't know about. And I've listened to people up here talk. And, you know, I think that, yeah, experience matters. It's important. But I'm proud to say that I'm independent and I don't have any debts to anybody at City Hall. I don't have any debts to anybody that is looking for contracts. And I'm only here to be able to represent my district. And so I believe it comes with understanding and having, again, the compassion and the know-how to be able to represent the people in District B.
Keep the mic.
Sure.
Y'all remember the question. I'm hearing that you in this race to do Claude Cummins and Dwight Boykins bidding.
You know, I've heard the same thing. And I'm glad you brought that question up. So, you know, you asked Alvin a question earlier about our relationship. Alvin was supporting me. He did not answer the question as to why he stopped supporting me. But Alvin introduced me to Dwight Boykins. Two years ago, when my husband, let me thank my husband for being here, two years ago, when my husband and I got a call that Ms. Jane Scott in South Park was being evicted from her home due to a reverse mortgage. And she only owed $843. I don't live in South Park, but I'm blessed and fortunate enough to still have my grandparents. And so I understand what it's like for a senior citizen to be given 48 hours to move out of a property that she has been in for over 60 years. And she doesn't have anybody to advocate for her. So it wasn't a problem for us to drive to South Park, not even knowing who the city council person was over there. But it was Alvin Byrd that said, hey, I want you to call Dwight Boykins. I'm gonna call his office and have them to call you. It was on a Sunday afternoon at the Rainbow Coalition Foundation that Ms. Claire Caldwell holds that Alvin Byrd introduced me to Mr. Claude Cummins. Had no clue who Mr. Claude Cummins was, because again, I never thought about running for office. But I will say this. No, I'm not a puppet for Dwight. I made a decision to run before I met Dwight Boykins. Alvin knows that. I made a decision to run before I met Claude Cummins. Alvin knows that. But I'm grateful for those relationships that was built through the introduction of Alvin. So yes, something happened. He should have answered the question, because the question was asked to him. But I'm grateful for those relationships. Dwight has only been here to help me when the person that was supporting me left. Claude Cummins has only been here to help me, to guide me, to introduce me to more people that are going to help support my candidacy. One thing that I will say about Claude Cummins, since his name was given to you, Claude owns four properties in District B. He has a business in District B. He is a vice president of CWA Communication Workers of America that represents a lot of people, middle-class individuals that live right here in our community and that work in our community. Thank you. So no, I'm not puppets for them, but I'm grateful for the relationship through Mr. Alvin Byrd. Thank you.
Your question was very straightforward. An individual needs to have the experience of a couple of things. The ability to get consensus, to develop relationships, and to understand the policies of city council. And also understand what's going on and what's really going on. I asked the mayor to fix a road. He told me 30 days. It is now going on 45 days. I was in his face before 30 days was up. He told me if we say we was gonna fix that road, we need to fix that road. I do not expect that road to be fixed. I do not expect all of y'all to get this hurricane money. Remember those blue tops on top of people's roofs? The city has failed a lot of people and will continue to fail a lot of people. They're not gonna tell you that. But what I did say to the mayor, answer me a question, Mr. Mayor, before I sit down. Do you plan to build the new Houston, the one that's coming, with people that don't look like us and haven't gotten here yet, on the ashes of my neighborhood? He didn't like that. And I wondered why I sat there and talked to him like that. But I wasn't very happy with, you can't fix a road? Then he tells me to go talk to Public Works. They say, well, you know, Mr. Butler, a lot of the problems that y'all have in your community go back to 2013, 2012. We got it in recordings. All this 3-1-1 and tracking stuff, when they tell you what really happens, you do see people call over and over for years, almost decades, to still get these things fixed. So the question was, what skills do I have? Working in the legislature for 25 years, transitioning those skills to be able to develop relationships with people, to understand how policies and processes work, but to also understand when people are lying to you, when people have hidden agendas. I got agendas, they got agendas. The question is, whose agenda is gonna win?
I value the fact that thanks to all of the years that I've spent in public education, the management positions that I've held in various capacities, I know how to innovate. I know how to investigate. I know how to participate. I know how to negotiate. And I definitely know how to educate. The thing that's important about all those areas, though, is the ability to listen and not to just push my own agenda. As someone who's representing the district, I need to make sure that I am hearing from all of the people in the district. The other thing I have to make sure I know how to do is to analyze what's happening, to be able to distinguish the forest from the trees. That's one of the skills that being a historian has allowed me to do. To go in and find the information and also to ask the right question. I have served on a lot of hiring committees at Texas Southern University. And I've watched people's desire to serve in a position be unraveled by a single question. Do you ask the right question? You will find out whether or not the person is really the person you want for the job. Listen to our answers and keep asking those questions.
I'm gonna be honest. You know, I don't have a lot of experience working in City Hall, but I do have experience with working with people. My gift is galvanizing people. You know, I sit on the board of GCCSA. They pretty much focus on helping undeserved parts of the city with after-school programs and things like that. I've sat, like I say, on Super Neighborhood. You know, I've worked in the community. I've done things to help the community out, you know? I don't care where you go, you're gonna have some kind of learning curve. You know, you think about Michael Jordan, the best basketball player in the world. But he still was, he focused on his game every time he got a chance to. It's always gonna be something you gotta do to improve yourself. So, you know, like I say, I'm just good at taking care of issues in the community. I focus on that, and that's what I'm continuing to focus on, things that go on in the community.
What's the question again? You don't have, get the conversation. And I don't know what the question is.
If you have no direct experience in city government, do you think that the skills and quality and experience is necessary? And if you, if you are, let's get this right for you.
All right.
Are you gonna be a full-time council member? Or this gonna be your second job? And you can be honest.
Okay, totally honest. Experience, really with the city, it helps. But ain't never what you know is who you know. If you don't know the right people to get in contact with to speed up some process, you lost. City council is gonna be my full-time job, because I have a passion for people. I'm one of the people that's actually sitting in the audience. I'm just running for city council. Because the bumps they feel, I feel. My tires get blowed out, I know. The grass is growing all over the sidewalk, I see it every day. I rode all through District B. But one thing I do know, when Jerry Davis did the hot teen, my job was first between I-10 and 16. So I got tired of just cleaning up Kajmigard and, you know, Fifth Ward and all that. I told them, let's expand it. So we got another truck. We start cleaning up Acres Home, City Gas, Rosewood, all of that. It's about who you know. So without experience and knowing who to talk to, what area to go to, you're gonna be going in there with a blindfold. You gotta learn it. And I didn't learn it overnight, but I listened. And I start gathering information. Even Alvin, he'll call me. Send, I need you to get this. The process with the illegal dumping was take a picture, send the address to District B, and it'd be turned over to me. I go to Civic Club meeting, take a picture, send me the address, send it to me. Because by the time you go through these channels, it might take a while. But if you send it to me directly, then I'll make sure it got done. So you need experience and you need to have passion for what you do. When you sleep, I'll sleep. When you sleep, I'll be woke sometime because of the problems that go on in the community. I ride my community at night. I ride my community in the day. Thank you.
Here's where, here's where experience does matter. With every operation, there are systems. The city of Houston is an operation. They have a system. And one of the things that's most important is twofold. The community has a responsibility to report. The city of Houston has a responsibility to provide the services to resolve those issues. Yes, you need to know who makes the decisions to help you resolve these issues. Take, for instance, we talk about community development and economic development. In community development, it has to stand on something, which means the infrastructure. I have been a part of teams that have identified capital improvement projects, got them funded, got them designed, and followed them all the way through completion. I was the chief of staff for two different council members. And being a chief of staff, I understand the process that it's not just on Tuesdays and Wednesdays that they have council. I mean, they do have councils, but that's not when a council member's at work. You have to meet people and talk about whatever is on the agenda. Then you have to be able to manage the office, because the office is the lifeblood of your relationship with your constituency. You gotta know how to hire people. You have a budget in your council member's office. Thank God in District B, we have a district service fund that you can use those. These are not discretionary funds, but you could use these funds for projects in your district. One of the ways that we'll be able to manage that is that we'll have folks through an advisory committee in each part of the district, connected like fingers on a hand, separate but equal. And they will determine what projects that they want to have funded by their council member. Also, when you talk about whether or not it's a part-time or a full-time job, you get part-time pay, but trust me, it's full-time hours. And the thing of it is, is that my time is up, but I just wanna say this. You need to have somebody go down there who know exactly how this thing work. Thank you.
I believe experience matter. I mean, over the years, I've worked with the city and, you know, I'm actually, I can call myself a policy expert. There's a lot of loopholes on, you know, how the city can prevent you from getting money or they use excuses on why they can't give you certain things. But understanding how those policies work and coming up with other solutions, that is how we can get some things done. Like with the criminal justice system, for example. And we spent $1.1 billion on the criminal justice system. And of course, I know crime is, you know, we need to be fighting real crime, but a lot of these are classy misdemeanors and traffic tickets. And so thinking about how we divesting from the criminal justice system and investing those resources into infrastructure projects and after-school programs. I mean, traffic tickets is a civil offense. And so one of the things that I want to fight for once I'm on council is to stopping the arrests on traffic tickets and coming up with other alternatives. So knowing those different policy loopholes and, you know, the tax abatements. I mean, we're giving billions, millions and billions of dollars to developers when we're not asking them for anything. We're not asking them to create any jobs or whatever. So that's something that we need to know, what we can do with these policies, what we can ask for to get the resources to improve our communities.
Mr. Eric, would you repeat that question? Would you repeat that question? Because so many people that spoke, the question gets distorted.
Okay. Let's not distort the question for you, brother. If you have no direct experience in government, do you believe that it takes some skills or quality or some type of experience? And is city council gonna be a second job for you?
Well, first, let me say this. The city council charted as a part-time job. That's the way it's written up.
Yeah, that's the way we've been getting treated, too.
But what I'm saying is this. You're only gonna be as good as the staff that you hire. And you have to hire experienced personnel. You have to be able to look out in this audience, like I'm looking out in this audience. And I see people like Kathy Daniels, Erica Hubbard, Charles Noble. All those people would be part of your advisory board. You have to be able to set yourself in a position to be successful. I believe that everybody that I hire have to come in my office smarter than me. If you ain't smarter than me, you can't work for me. That's just the bottom line. So I would hire people like, to work for me. I'm sorry. But that, to be a great manager or a great council member, you have to surround yourself around great people. And if you don't, you cannot be successful. That's just the bottom line.
Okay. We all know what it is with our communities, because we all live in this community. We can sit here and talk about the issues and the problems of our community. They don't get solved. They seldom even looked at. You don't pay no attention. Once you get in office, you don't look at it because of those that we put in office. So what we trying to do is we trying to check the person, you know, that we gonna put in office. Because most times, once we get you in office, and just be honest, because we haven't had anybody do anything in District B probably since the '60s. You know, District B, I mean, I know what Fifth Ward used to look like when I was growing up. We had businesses all up and down the lounge. The only thing that's left on Lounge Avenue is Reagan Shoe Store. That was back in the day. So now, you all, we know about the illegal dumping. I've got a business on Dabney's dumping. They dump there every week. They dump there every week because the city council ain't doing what he's supposed to be doing. So now, once you in office, because you talking about these policies and this experience, once you in office, are you, Byrd and Cynthia and Tasha and Ben and Allison and Ms. Jefferson Smith, are you all gonna do the exact same things? And the reason why we asking these questions is because there's a track record of nothing being done. There's a track record. And so when you go in office, you gonna stand there and you gonna take over. So who you working for? Because you gonna, we gonna vote one of you all in office. And by us being your constituents, you should be working for District B. Can you do that? I mean, just be honest, can you do that? Byrd? And then Renee?
I've always been a worker in District B, before I even went to city council. One of the things, let's just be real about it. We got a responsibility in the community as well. Because see, soon as the city pick it up, sometime people dump it right back down there again. If you see something, you need to say something. What the district council member can do to help abate that is this whole camera deal. They are catching people dumping, but we don't put them on blast, Russ. I wanna put them on blast. I wanna put them on blast because we need a deterrent for illegal dumping. Illegal dumping is the number one issue in the district. It ain't healthcare. It ain't education. When you look at those three-one-one calls, and we get almost four thousand calls a month, almost forty thousand calls a year, and illegal dumping is the number one issue. Stop letting people dump in these ditches that you see them doing. And if you know these absentee landlords who don't have lease agreements with people that are letting folks have these apartments thirty days, you know, about thirty days, and soon as Nook Nook can't pay the rent, he lock all his stuff up. And when Nook Nook leaves, he pays somebody to go and dump this. The main thing is this. We have a responsibility in the community as well to make sure that when we see this dumping going on, Dabney is one of those places that they used to have a camera over there. And guess what happened? The clarity of the camera was not good enough to convict. So as your city council member, I'll make sure we get those cameras in the hot spots. And Solid Waste has a hot map to show all of that.
I believe it was Allison that said that we, you know, have to make sure that we're holding each other accountable. And so I will say to you, if you live in the district, you have to make sure that you get involved. You have to make sure that you get involved in your super neighborhood meetings. You have to make sure that you get involved in your civic club meetings. And sometimes you have to become a little nosy. You know, we all have pushcars on the table and we can all can stand here and tell you what we're advocating for. But when you get in office, what are you really going to do? I mentioned that I'm from the Acres Home community. My husband is from Trinity Garden. We both originated out of Fifth Ward. Just like any other millennial or Gen X, whatever you have us, we thought about moving to Humble. And one thing that I realized is that we were blessed and fortunate enough to inherit our property where we own a nice piece of land, we don't have a mortgage, and it was something that we can pass on to our children. And so what I educate individuals on is that you should be here. This is a place that you should be. We're facing gentrification throughout our communities and we know that everyone that looks like us is not for us. Even some of the ones that are sitting up here today. And you need somebody that's gonna be passionate about helping people. There are people that are hungry. As I spoke to Mr. Russell earlier and I told him I was gonna be late, there is a lady that is seventy-six years old that is living on her home on Spalding Street that was never mucked out from Hurricane Harvey. Our community is under attack. And we need somebody that's gonna truly fight and advocate for those issues. Someone that's gonna be a hundred percent transparent, somebody that has the ability to get the job done, someone that's gonna be able to protect the legacy and the history and the preservation that we have, that we know in our communities such as Fifth Ward, such as Trinity Garden, such as Cashmere Garden, Acres Home. When they come for our schools, they're coming for our communities. And as you know, they've already started changing the names of schools. So we used to have two, three-year term limits. Now we have two four-year term limits. This is a pivotal and crucial moment for our district. We need someone who's gonna be able to move us forward, someone that will bring the resources, the learning programs, vocational training programs, the jobs. And that's not gonna make a promise that they cannot keep. Someone that's truly passionate for the people and that can get the job done.
The scale of illegal dumping is unfathomable. I'm in disbelief on how a level of criminality has been allowed to continue for so long. Yes, we do have people coming from outside the community dumping in our community, but it's mainly the people who live in the community dumping our community. You know, as your role as a citizen, we need to make sure that if we're doing work on our homes, we need to make sure that we're hiring legitimate contractors and not people that are gonna go do some work on your house and then go dump it around the corner from your house. On top of that, did you know that if you get cited for illegal dumping, it's a hundred and eighty days to get the problem solved? A hundred and eighty days, that's six months. Mind you, heavy trash comes about two, three times before that. So are we condoning the problem as a city? I think we should change the days from a hundred and eighty to a thirty-day policy. And on top of that, I think we should have a three-strike rule. If this is your third time cited for illegal dumping, you should be fined. If you don't wanna pay, you're fined. The city should issue another trash can to you and then tack it on your water bill. There's a lot of these landlords who are not being responsible for their tenants. Their tenants leave and the landlords themselves dump the mattresses and dump whatever contents are on the house. And it's disrespectful to our community because not only is it a social, it's a financial, and it's an economic cost. And we have to start taking these issues seriously because the costs are serious. And so as part of city council, you know, there has to be policy change. We can't keep condoning the problem that we're just gonna keep paying workers overtime to pick up the dumping. There has to be higher ramifications.
So the answer is real simple. Do the math. This is eight years. This community didn't get bad in eight years. It got bad in the last thirty years. So y'all have an expectation that a person is gonna show up and from day one to the last day of eight years, they gonna turn all this around. Really? Okay. Let's be clear about this.
So you saying we shouldn't vote for you?
No, I'm saying that you be realistic.
I mean, we voting for you to get it done. We don't wanna hear that, you got eight years to do it. If you can't do it in eight years, why we voting for you? Yeah, that's all you got is eight years, brother. If you can't do it in eight years, why would we vote for somebody that's telling us they can't get the job done in eight years?
Because it's unfair. Did you hold all those other people that had this position to the same accountability? But you let them skate. And some of them are getting to the finish line and gonna walk away with no consequences.
We didn't let them skate.
So where were the consequences?
We just decided to get. We just decided to get involved.
Now, today.
And so you got eight years to straighten it. You can't straighten it in eight years?
Every single issue under the sun.
District B is not the whole Houston, Texas. District B is what, about twelve communities?
Right. That sit with other council members that fight for the same.
District B is, one of you gonna represent District B. Not Kubash or Barkin. We not concerned about, we concerned about District B.
Correct. But you gotta also understand that council members fight over budgets, money, authority, and everything else. And you gotta either get in or you get out. So the thing at this end of the day, you gonna win some and you gonna lose some. The goal is that you win more than you lose. And you improve and better your community and set it up for the next people so that you'll have another additional good eight years and a better candidate. And you can have leaders that come into your community and start taking care of it.
So you saying we should have no real expectations? Just put one of you all in office and whatever?
No, the truth is, I gotta vote for the mayor. I gotta vote for at-large city council members. Hold on, hold on, hold on. You asked me the question. I gotta vote for people, too. So I have expectations, too. So I gotta be realistic about how this actually works. So my response to you is how this actually works. And this community didn't get bad in eight years. So the turnaround is gonna take more than eight years. But you gotta get started.
Oh, we understand that it's gonna take some time. But if you can't get it going in eight, then.
Never say it couldn't get it going. You said solve it.
Is any of you all up here can't do the job? You got eight years.
You keep saying can't do the job. The question is solve it.
No, you got eight years, Tasha. You got eight years, Bird. Robin. That's all you got. You ain't got sixteen. You got eight years. Can you service us with them eight years? If you can't, then you shouldn't be up here. Now, I'm just saying that's for everybody.
People can serve.
It's all you got, Karen. You got eight years.
Listen, listen, I'm number, listen. Well, I'm gonna claim the eight, okay?
Yeah.
I'm number eight in a family of nine. Eight is the number of new beginnings. So what we need is fresh ideas. We need a fresh approach. It is so easy to talk about the problem that we see, but we need to think of innovative ways to make some things happen. And then we need to think about those ways that are just common. I was in a meeting in the Scenic Woods area last week. And one of the issues that I heard was that there, and it was someone who was on staff. They said that there was a shortage of people who were working in the sanitation department because of the competition that they were having with other people like Amazon. They were finding better jobs, right? So perhaps we may need to look at paying our sanitation workers a wage that's gonna attract people to their job. Okay? That's just a real issue. So if we can raise the, maybe able to get more people to help with the problem because the city is understaffed in that area. So there are some practical solutions that we can look at. And of course, yes, we can all do our part. How many of you put out trash every week? It's an ongoing issue. So it's not, there's not gonna be a one-time, one-size-fits-all kind of solution. We're gonna have to have multiple approaches to this problem. We're gonna have, we have to deal with what we can do at Vigils. We also need to work in our community as a whole that is on my block. We need to be aware of who's doing the dumping. And we all need to be involved. So it's not just a one-size-fits-all kind of situation, nor is it gonna be one person with a magic bullet that makes it all happen. We're gonna have to work together. And we're gonna have to communicate. And I'll say this finally. We, it all boils down to as well, an issue of self-respect. When we respect ourselves and when we respect people who look like us and when we respect people who don't look like us, we respect folks regardless of their economic standing. We won't just ride by Cashmere Gardens and say, oh, that's just a bunch of poor folks who don't care. No. You do what you can. If it's economic resources that you can share, share them. We've gotta do it together.
I'm gonna agree with Ms. Karen here. We have to take a different approach. With me, I've volunteered my time to pick up trash in my community in between times when the city can't come in and pick up, do heavy pickup trash or whatnot. So, you know, we have to, you know, I really think that we should get out and do it ourselves, too, y'all. I mean, we can't just let the trash just sit there and have our property value get taken down or whatnot. But, you know, I think what we should do is start strengthening civic clubs again. We start strengthening civic clubs again, it's gonna have some ownership. People gonna see, we can start talking about where the trash is being dumped at. And then after that, we start encouraging our people in the civic clubs to get out, hey, let's do it ourselves. Because we start, they start seeing people pick up our own trash. People gonna be less likely to come in and start dumping trash in the same spot because they say, you know what? They was over here last week. They watching us now. You know what I mean? So I think we need to take a more persuasive approach. And that's what I've been doing.
Let me explain that to you. First of all, we accept what they give us. It's time out for that. They give us stuff we don't even want. We don't want no bike trail. Ain't none of us riding no bikes. They spend six million dollars on a bike trail for Robin just to ride. He the only one, him and Rodney Ellis just to ride. You know, our community need what we need and we need to fight for what we need. Stop giving us what you want us to have and give us what we need. District B need nurturing. It don't need no rah-rah, we gonna do, no. We need to sit down at the table and say, this is what we need. Get a collective plan together. And we come together and we say, this is what we need. And we all fight for the same issue. We got too many people saying, I need this, I need that. Cleaning up, hey, we got to be our brothers' keeper. You know, I ain't, I'm not picking that up because it ain't mine. It don't make no difference. My neighbor across the street, it makes me mad every month. After heavy trash come out, this boy wanna put out some limbs. He wanna put out a hook cap. I just take it and put it over there. You know, we're too quick to say what's not mine, what's his. But you got Johnny down the street, Ms. Smith grandson, Ms. Walker grandson. They trashing, but you won't say nothing, but you wanna say something about somebody else. It ain't nowhere in the world, some of the places I have picked up trash in front of the same people's house three times a month. You ain't, if you got that much trash, that a house now. I ride, my first stop every day was the mediums of every neighborhood. Apartment complex put mattress, put everything else out. Do y'all not know, we pick up stuff they got bedbugs on it? You know, they put it out there. But ain't nowhere in the world you can put a truckload of stuff and then nobody see it. See something, say something. Let's work together to solve these issues.
One of the things a district council member can do, he can actually summons or he can request department heads come to his office and talk about existing ordinances or policies. Yes, this illegal dumping has progressed, as with some other issues in our district. And I think we need to challenge our core beliefs when it come to whether or not we gonna stay with the status quo. What I'm saying is, Chapter ten, Chapter forty-two, these are the chapters that we deal with the most when it comes to public nuisance. We call these people in and we talk to them about, and I agree with the sister on the end. I mean, you know, we're taking taxpayer dollars to abate other people's property when they should be taking care of their own property. They get a ticket, just like you do a traffic ticket. You gotta go to a public hearing and they give you an extension. You get another extension and the trash still. Solid Waste won't pick it up until a citation is written. That doesn't mean it's resolved. Challenge those policies. Even with housing, I see Mr. Nova's over there. He's always talking about, when the last time somebody wrote policy? That's what a council member does. He legislates. Write some stuff. Go down there and say, let me see the city of Houston's charter, the code of ordinances, and see what's outdated. And I'm gonna say this again, I don't like to criminalize stuff, but man, this illegal dumping, somebody got to go to jail. Serious business, somebody got to go to jail. Because we need a real deterrent for some. I want Ray Ray to think, hey, man, listen, I ain't gonna do that because they might catch me. There's no deterrent. So they poo-pooing all over our neighborhoods, man.
Well, I have to disagree with Mr. Bird about the going to jail part, you know. I mean, I've been hearing about the illegal dumping for quite some time. And, I mean, our systems is so punitive. I mean, don't get me wrong, if somebody commit a crime, they should be held accountable. But we need to think about how we invest in our money. You know, I mean, we just recently, I mean, what, a few years ago, Jerry Davis and Alan Rosen, they spent, invested millions of dollars in cameras. And you got staff that's sitting there, you know, looking at the cameras. And, you know, and we're cleaning up the illegal dumping. And so we need to look at smart solutions. For example, in California, they deal with illegal dumping and they invested in bins. In District B, we only have one bin for District B. And so investing, I think investing in bins within the city and educating the people on where these bins are at. And then once they are educated, then if they start dumping, then we continue to, you know, we be punitive. We arrest them, you know, give them tickets or whatever. But we have to start coming up with some smart solutions first and not be so punitive on everything. You know, I mean, it's just like finding out what is the problem. In District B, you have sixty percent of the people are renters. You know, I think Allison said earlier, renters are moving, they're dumping their stuff. Let's come up with some other solutions. Now, don't get me wrong, like I said, people should be held accountable. They should be fined. They should pay for destroying our neighborhood. But we, as a council member, we see it keep happening over and over again. Let's just go back to the drawing board and see what is going on. You know, why are these people dumping? You know, and come up with some smart solutions. You know, because it's been the same thing. Cameras, dumping, cleaning it up, and tickets. Let's just try something different. I mean, and if it don't work, then we go back to, you know, what we've been doing for the past, how many years? Ten, twenty years? And so I'm just saying, let's come up with some smart solutions that's less punitive. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with Alvin. They need to go to jail. I've been picking up trash behind these people for the last thirty years. They need to go to jail. Nineteen ninety-one, we start to keep five alive, clean up along with Conoco. And we picked up two tons of trash our first year, three tons of trash our second year, four tons of trash our third year. And the CEO of Conoco said, Ben, this is not working. And the reason it's not working, we picking up more trash before than we picked up the year before, past. He said, this is not working. And the bottom line is, this is two thousand nineteen, they need to go to jail. Now, what I'd like to talk about right quick is this economic development. When you said it's only Reagan, it's the only store, only, uh, business on Lyons Avenue, that's our fault because we stopped opening up our own businesses. See, we need to stop going around asking Cona, uh, uh, HEB and Kroger to come bring a store out in our neighborhood. We need to put that store out in our neighborhood ourselves. We need to get a group of black people together and says, come on, let's invest in our community. Because the bottom line is, if the store is owned by us, we, we work, and the people that work in it is us, the people that's buying in it is us, that's what it should be. And the bottom line is, I also think that that store should be owned by a woman, a group of women. Because who know groceries better than they do? So, until we start getting into the position where we're taking back our own community, then we got to sit up, quit complaining about what it used to be like. The bottom line is, the people in these rooms have the power. The power is in these rooms. And if you keep, the, the elected official can assist you, there's all kinds of incentive programs that the city have for you to open up your own business. We need to take advantage of it. We need to put ourselves in a position to be able to take advantage of it. And when we do that, we will prosper as a community, we will prosper as a people.
We're getting close to time, so we're gonna do, uh, we got two questions, we'll see how long it takes. One of the questions, somebody wrote, say, quality of public services like our parks and rec services, solid waste, libraries, ETC are essential for our communities. When our city looks to make budget cuts, the service, the services we depend on seem to be the first ones on the chopping block. What would you do as a councilperson to ensure that our services are not cut in the future?
I spoke on a plan that I had earlier, and that plan is called You Should Be Here. And a part of my plan is to make sure that I am bringing resources to the community such as vocational and training programs, making sure that we have a business owner to encourage those that are looking to go into entrepreneurship and opportunity to become an independent business owner within their community, and then be able to go back and serve in their community. As we know, not all children are going to college. Some just unfortunately don't have the desire, some don't have money. But we need to be able to encourage our children how to work with their hands. One of the ways that we can do that is to partner again with our unions, the apprenticeship programs that they have, to look at providing those resources to help our children become productive citizens within our district. Can you repeat the second part of the question?
What would you do as a councilperson to ensure that our services are not cut in the future?
And then also to make sure that, again, you know, I've said it before, I, I think I've said it twice, this may be my third time, make sure that we are partnering with people that have a vested interest in District B. We know that all money is not good money. We know that a lot of organizations say that they are coming into our communities to help us. They tell us, you know, everything that we need, and then they give us maybe three thousand dollars off of the budget that they have received. I've witnessed a lot of organizations that have been set up right here in the community, and still today, there are people that unfortunately don't have the resources that are needed. So it's just making sure that we are creating partnerships with people that have a vested interest in our community, and making sure that we are bringing in resources that are going to help us grow. I'll speak briefly again on economic development and the illegal dumping. Time? Okay. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
I'm spending more time repeating these questions. Y'all educated.
Well...
I'm gonna repeat it for you.
Thank you. It's my first time asking that.
Y'all listen to this question. Ben?
Quality public service, I think this comes from a little, uh, one of the little youngsters. Quality public, public services like our parks and rec services, solid waste, libraries, ETC are essential for our communities. When our city looks to make budget cuts, the services we depend on seem to be the first on the chopping block. What would you do as a councilperson to ensure that our services are not cut in the future?
We're paying our fair share of taxes, just like every other neighborhood has been paying their fair share of taxes. So being able to have the same resources that we deserve, that should be first and frontmost, uh, discussions. Also, I think we need to tap into other resources that we have. You know, we have a lot of businesses in the community, especially Fortune 500 companies that are invested in the community, their dollars are in the community. And we need to be having conversations with these businesses on how they can be a better neighbor. On top of that, um, there's current builders, I've already been building relationships with builders that are in my community. We have one builder who's actually going to turn a space into a park. So being able to have relationships and tap into other resources other than the city to, to meet the needs of what's going on in the communities is, is very essential.
Yeah. Good. Good answer.
A quick throwback to that previous question that you and I got sidetracked on.
I apologize. I apologize, bro.
No, come at me with everything, cause I want you to be able to say to me or anybody up here, you're not the person we looking for. You gotta be able to do that. And it's the change within the people. So going back to that previous question?
No, no, we gotta go to this question.
I, I know, I'm gonna get to it. I'm just gonna simply say, I don't need no leaders, I don't need no council member, I don't need no mayor. I get up and go do it on my own. So, in regards to your question, councils have finite budgets, and all of those departments you mentioned, I've met the people in them and they do an outstanding job. But when you are trying to destroy a community from outside and within, you withhold all that stuff from them. So if you are a council member, you understand what the real play is, and when you sit down to negotiate with other council members, that pool of money, you fight as hard as you can to make sure that your money stays in, that money for roads and bridges, to look and see what other people are getting, and to understand how to horse trade, and to get what you need to get for your community and your people. It's not a simple thing, but it takes a lot of work. This job is like stepping off a cliff on faith. So for that eight years, you gotta be setting up somebody you haven't met for success. The next person behind you and the person that will come after them. So at that point, you'll start seeing changes in your community.
Thank you.
I think it's important to organize a team. We haven't come up with the name of it yet, but it could be a team that's committed to fighting for what's right in each of these communities. One of the things that I've found in, in my own area of, of service, is that sometimes people are quick to complain, but they're not quick to praise. So when things are happening that are good in your community, let city council know. Let them know, we appreciate the improvements that you've made in, in, you know, whatever park. We, just send them a letter, send, uh, send your councilperson, let them know that you appreciate, because what you're gonna do is provide them with evidence that we have done something right. And then in addition to that, when you come with your complaint, right, it's a little easier to stomach. So the, the idea is that you not only give the complaint, but you also give the praise. One of the things we have to make sure we do is show up at city council in numbers. When we find out that something is gonna be cut, you ought to show up. Find a way to show up in numbers to say, we want to hold on to this, we don't want this to go. The final thing I'll say is, we have to be aware, please put up the time, we have to be aware that some of these issues that are happening are much larger than just our losing services, okay? Some of it is related to bigger issues like gentrification. And one of the things that you do when you wanna kill a community is to make sure that certain passageways are, are not there, like what happened to Lyons Avenue, when they closed the exit for many years, that's what killed those businesses in that area. It wasn't just that the businesses died, people didn't have easy access into those, into, onto Lyons Avenue. So it's understanding the broader issues, cause sometimes we get lost in the trees. But you need to know what's happening from the top, so you can actually organize and synergize and get something done.
Well, first off, I've been laid off before. It's not a good feeling, you know? And I can only imagine what some of the, the people in the city are feeling. It just, it's not, it's getting out there and trying to find another job, you've been there for, you know, five, ten years, it's not a good feeling. So the first thing I would do is I would look over the budget and see why were there cuts, you know? And then I would figure out ways of what, what can I take money from to put back in, to put people back into place, into employment. Like I say, it's just, it's not a good feeling to be unemployed, you know? Um, I've had friends that work for the parks, uh, in recreation, and they're, they're, they're nervous. They are nervous now, you know? But the only thing I can do, look over the budgets and figure out what we can cut and add to, to save their jobs, cause I don't wanna fire anybody.
Uh, what I'll do to stop, to prevent the, uh, layoffs from parks and everything, if you notice, they taking everything really from the kids and from the seniors, middle class, we could, we could do it. But what we have to do is, uh, we have enough business in District B to try to set up a rainy day fund. But you know what? These are our kids, these are our parks, this is for our community. Why can't we as a community, if we see it coming, as a councilperson, I'm gonna tell you, this coming down the pipeline. But I'm not gonna let you close everything in B, and you don't touch nothing in D. You don't touch nothing in K. You don't touch nothing in H. If one of mine's get closed, two of theirs need to get closed. I, I'm just straight up, I mean, because we have been shut down so long, we've been with the yes man, with the yes woman, the yes, I ain't yes in nothing. You're not closing nothing in District B. We got too many business leaders out here that we don't stand up and fight. We got to fight for our own. They might wanna cut, but you can rest assured, I'm gonna make sure somebody else get cut. We not gonna be the only people that cut. When they were saying about the firefighters, oh, it was four, four fire stations in District B, one in everywhere else. The devil was a lie, cause you cutting one on wayside, across the street from the senior citizens. I went to Mayor Turner, hey player, you're not doing that one. So you might as well go back and figure out where else you gonna get one from, but that one right there, nah. You know, you got to know who to talk to, what to say, and how you gonna stand up. For instance, they closed Hobart Taylor Pool two years ago. I made a phone call, I said, this pool don't be open by Memorial Day weekend. It was only one weekend left, but the kids need to swim. Do you know that pool was open for that weekend and two weekends after? It's talking to the right people. Thank you.
This is when your councilmember reaches out to his constituency. Cause the councilmember really is only as effective as the folks in that district. There are some examples where you have to think outside of the box. Over in the bottom, in Fifth Ward, at, uh, Sweeney Park, where the park had not been touched since nineteen seventy-two. And the super neighborhood council at that time, when I was president, we got with Texas Parks and Wildlife and found money to renovate the park. No city dollars, cause they swear to God they didn't have dollars. Brand-new playground equipment, uh, got indoor toilets, indoor restrooms, and they brought the, uh, the building up to code. The building was not ADA, um, qualified or ADA compliant. Then, the district is so fragmented that we have best-case practices happening right in front of our noses, I mean, right under our noses. Over in Scenic Wood, what is that thing y'all did with the library you brought in to what? Charles?
Tech link.
Tech link. In, in other words, we have to, we have to make our, our amenities, our facilities attractive so that we can build up the usage. Cause that's the first to go. The least used is the first to go. So when we start attracting our people back, making sure they sign in when they come as well. The thing of it is, is that somebody said it, that we deserve to have the same amenities as other folks? I believe that. However, we need to make sure we use these amenities once we bring them up to standard.
Well, what I would do is, first, organize the community, let the community know what's going on. Um, secondly, look at why there is gonna be budget cuts, uh, cuts with these services. But thirdly, identify other resources. I mean, right now, you have the city giving millions of dollars away in tax abatements. I mean, with those tax dollars that they're giving to developers, we can request community benefits. I mean, we did it with the Clement Manor Apartment Complex, we, we signed a community benefits agreement with the developer, and he create, actually put money into the school and to the people that's living in the apartment complex. They now have a center in the community, um, computers where the kids are learning. So those are things that we can do. Also, TERS, the TERS dollars, tax increment, zoned, um, there's additional money that we can use for affordable housing. So most importantly, it's like looking at where the resources is going and being allocated, and then advocate to have those resources allocated for the services that we need within our community.
Okay. What I'm about to say is not gonna win me any points, but I'm gonna tell you the truth. There's a pie, cash pie, and the mayor cut up the pie. And the mayor gonna cut up that pie, and when he cut up that pie, District B is gonna get the smallest piece of the pie. That's real. Your councilmember would have to be able to take that little piece of pie and stretch that dollar. Your councilmember will have to have the ability to go outside of the city to the private sector and get money and bring it into your district. Your councilmember would have to be a visionary that can see things and have the ability to go to people and get money and bring them to their district. I have that ability. I, I'm a member of the Professional Fundraiser Association, and I like to use it as a term as, I'm a professional beggar. I know how to go into the Exons and the Houston Endowment and ask them for money for my community. I have a gift to ask for money for my community, but I don't have that gift to ask for money for myself. Um, when I believe in something, I can get it done. So I will be able to go to all these endorsements, all these people that got money, you just got to know what they're willing to give, cause you got people out there with deep pockets that wanna give away money, but you got to know what they wanna get the money away to. Some environmental people out there that would give big dollars to help clean up District B. And the bottom line is, you have to sort those people out, and you have to be able to go and get that money, like I went and got that money from Conoco. No one thought Conoco would've put that kinda money into picking up paper. And I once had a councilmember told me, it was more to being a councilmember than picking up paper.
Thank you all. One of these brothers and sisters, one of these brothers and sisters is gonna be city council for District B. So I hope that you all been paying attention to these brothers and sisters, because we need a true representative in District B. Now, some of us understand that, you know, it's gonna take more than eight years. You know, it's gonna take some time, but time is not on District B's side.
That's right.
You know, I'm from, I was born at forty-nine oh-two Lee Street, and I can't even afford to stay in Fifth Ward now. You know, in the community that I'm from, I can't afford to stay there because the property is too expensive. You know, so there's a gentrification that's transpiring over there. You know, they done renamed some parts of Fifth Ward, it ain't Fifth Ward no more. So now, that means that they are coming this way. Huh, Skip? They coming to Homestead. They coming this way. We need somebody that's gonna fight for us, man. Brothers, we need somebody gonna fight for our community. Because I don't wanna close down my business. You know, I like Cashmere Garden and Rosewood, I like riding up and down Titwell and Homestead. Is the future possible? I mean, is District B gonna be, are they gonna cut us up? And are you gonna help them? You know, thank you, thank you all for coming. You know, and we wanna thank these brothers and sisters because whoever, we gotta support because whichever one of these brothers and sisters become city council, they ain't gonna be able to get the job done without me and you. So me and you not gonna be able to sit at home and thank Renee, or Tasha, or Karen, or Allison is gonna get the job done. They not. So whoever this city councilperson is gonna be, we ask that, you know, we support them, you know? And if they don't do their job, four years, and you out. Thank you all for coming, and we'll see you next time.
Thanks for having us.